You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 11th meeting for the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome, everybody, to the Town Council meeting, August 11th, 2025, town of Long Beach. Let's please stand for the pledge. Meg, could you do roll call, please?
President Joy Schmidt.
Here.
Kendra Bartlett.
Here.
Anita Remigius.
Here.
Cindy Levy.
Here.
Colleen Lane.
Here.
Chief Swistec.
Present.
Ernie Willoughby. Clerk Collins, I am present. That concludes roll.
Thank you. I only have one opening remark. On July 5th was the 20 year anniversary of our deputy clerk, Deanna Carlson. So we just want to thank her for her 20 years of service and for being such a good face for the town. And for being, you know, nice and happy to everybody.
And helpful.
So, thank you, Deanna, for
Thank you, Deanna.
Your 20 years.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, council meeting, July 14th, 2025. I have one change, I think, on page four, under ordinance number 2025 dash oh five. That paragraph, I do not believe it was sent back to the APC for changes. That wasn't, we determined after the meeting that that wasn't required. So we could take that, take out that sentence. And with that change, I would move to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any public comments? They'll be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments in the audience? Do we have any public comments on Zoom? Raise your hand if you do. Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Police Department Commission Chief Swistec.
Good evening. For the month of July, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 520 calls for service when compared to 471 in the previous year for an increase of 49 calls for service. During the month of July, 18 incident reports were documented. A total of eight individuals were arrested. One arrest for misdemeanor minor in possession of alcohol. One arrest for misdemeanor minor in possession of alcohol to include a misdemeanor charge of forgery. The young man was in possession of a fraudulent identification card. One misdemeanor arrest for a motor vehicle speed contest. Two misdemeanor arrests for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. Three warrant arrests, one for failure to appear for trespassing. A probation violation for possession of drug paraphernalia. And a felony possession of a narcotic drug. There were no major incidents to pass along for the month of July. As we discussed at our last meeting, there were no major incidents during the Fourth of July weekend either. And all staff were accounted for and were very professional. The police commission met on Thursday, July 17th at 3:00 PM. All commission members were present. I'll just kind of overview some of the main things that we discussed. We recap the July 4th weekend. We discussed the 2025 Dodge Durango. Our new police vehicle is now in service, assigned to Sergeant Sights. Discussion reference our 1999 police boat, which is out of service currently due to a faulty engine. A reminder that the 2025-2026 golf cart permits are now available for $100. That's a two-year permit available in the clerk treasurer's office. We discussed the FLOCK LPR, which are license plate reader cameras. We had a lengthy discussion in reference to those, and it was a favorable recommendation from all police commissioners to the town council. That'll be on tonight's agenda for discussion and for a vote. And then we discussed a new ATV purchase for the latter part of this year for the spring of 2026. And we'll be approaching the Long Beach Civic Association, asking for some financial assistance to purchase that unit for Beach Patrol. There were no public comments. And then the commissioners had a concern of young kids observed operating golf carts during the Fourth of July weekend, which we would agree, we stopped numerous golf carts with young individuals that were operating them. And that is all that I have to report.
Is there any issue? Are there, I know sometimes parents say it's okay, we're with them. You know, they're in the past, I think, or they get upset if the child, if the person driving is 16, but you're not sure. Or are you, do you just issue warnings to the, if they're kids without an adult, do you just issue warnings? Do you issue tickets? Do you get pushback from parents on it? I mean,
Everybody's been very understanding. The majority were warnings that were issued. The parents were called to the scene to pick up the golf cart. There were several ordinance tickets that were issued for golf carts that were not registered. Golf carts that were in violation of the parking ordinance. So our officers did issue several ordinance violations. But the few that we did find that were under the age and did not possess a driver's license, those individuals were not ticketed and the parents were called to come get the golf cart.
And then if they don't have the Long Beach sticker, do they have to come in? Is that, does that rectify the ticket that they, but they do have to come in then at some point and purchase the sticker?
They do, and then they also have to pay for the fine for operating the golf cart without the permit.
Okay, so that's good. So then they're in the system then, right? Okay.
One thing I did bring up now while we're under the police department report. Last fall, the council approved the police department to utilize $4,000 from our donation fund from our marine unit fundraising event that we had held in the spring of 2024. The $4,000 went to Lexipol grant writing company to assist us in preparing for a grant with the federal government, which is the Port Security Grant. Typically, that grant opens every May and then closes approximately 90 days later. The grant just opened on August 1st and closes this Friday. So thankfully, our team has been working on the grant in preparation of the May opening. So we will meet next week, Friday's deadline. I spoke with Lexipol actually on email today, and I had an hour-long phone conference with them last week. We will be submitting our grant to Lexipol for the Port Security Grant. And we're asking for 200 and I believe $25,000 for a new 29-foot police boat for the Long Beach Police Department. If we are successful, the town would then be responsible for 25% as a match opportunity for the grant. The schedule for the grant is awarding grants this October. Purchases would go forward January of 2026 with council approval. And everything is contingent on the council approving, having funds in place. And there's one other thing I was going to share with you. Oh, and then we'll have a mutual aid agreement that we're working on with the city of Michigan City to bring both of our departments together with their dive unit so that they would have mutual access to the vessel. And it would be stored from May through October in the marina, so it's readily available for use. So the grant's going well. The team's worked extremely hard to get the grant in. Clerk Collins has been very helpful. Meg has helped us with getting the budget information over to the grant writers. But I just wanted to update the council that we are moving forward with the grant for this Friday. And I will share the grant application with everybody once I receive the final application from Lexipol.
And our old senior citizen boat is still not working, just so people know, it's pretty much dead in the water. And it was, what, 30 years old?
Nineteen, 1999, when we first got it.
So it's still not available and even wasn't during the July 4th holiday weekend.
It's got a blown engine.
Thank you. Town Administrator Chief Swistec.
Just a couple of things. The roof estimates for the roof repair here, I have the first one. I am waiting on one more estimate so we can compare the two estimates. I have reached out as recent as last Friday, encouraging the other company to please get that estimate to me. We'll be paying for that out of the town administrator fund. I've already spoke to Meg about that. And that's a necessity. We have to move forward with that. The 2025-2026 leaf collection, I spoke with Dan Healy. Dan with Healy's Landscaping, Dan has assured the town that he will hold the last year's contract price for leaf collection. We will not see an increase for that. And he will honor that. So we will be sharing that with the council probably next month in September. Park survey has been completed. They finished that, I believe, last Thursday. So we hope this week or next week to have our hands on the survey. The Public Works Building, where our street department and water department are housed. We had upgraded all the lighting on the exterior to LED lighting last month. And that's all I have to share from the town side.
Thank you. Volunteer Fire Department, Dave.
Good evening, everyone. This is a report for the first seven months of this year. On the fireside, we're running about 25% more calls than last year at this time. The breakdown by area, 42 of the calls have been Long Beach. 18 have been, or I should say 17 have been in Doolin Beach. And one was Michiana Shores, and that was a mutual aid. So was Doolin Beach mutual aid because we were toned out for false alarms or possible structure fires at the same time. The calls break down, we had four hazardous condition calls, which could be, and I think it was, a combination of gas leaks, carbon monoxide, and power line issues. We had seven false alarms for the month. We had two watercraft rescues, and these typically are people from the shore or from the homes along Lake Shore Drive see a capsized windsurfer or hobby, and they're concerned. And they're, they may not write it right away, but usually they do. But were called out and to provide any possible assistance. So we had two calls, but everything was fine. On the medical side, we're running about 16% more calls this year versus last. 72 calls for the year so far is all Long Beach. We had two personal injury calls. We had five sick person calls. And we had one welfare check. And I'm going to break away from the report. Mark, have you, with the golf carts, have the officers pulled carts over for too many people being on the carts?
We have. You have to have the number of seats for the number of passengers. So we have, yes.
Okay. Because a number of years ago, Stop 16 area, there was a golf cart rollover. And it seemed pretty basic, but it was, the person had a very serious concussion. And so I was just curious when you gave your report. Thank you. Fire call response of members still continues at eight per call and medical, it's five. The response time of the department within one second of each other was 4.3 minutes. Members have donated 924 hours year-to-date. I thought I would start giving you a little bit of what we're doing in the course of a month as far as training. In the last six weeks, we've had Burn Tower, which is out on Hitchcock, with, which is an extremely useful facility for volunteer department because we can simulate many, many different scenarios using live fire, smoke. And we've gotten quite a bit of use out of that facility. We had first responder environmental emergencies, which could be anything. A natural disaster, just talking about things like a work table or workshop. We have done hydrant, driving, and hose lays. In other words, we're operating the trucks, we're pumping from the hydrants, we're putting hose out, we're using nozzles, just like fire people do. We had a water rescue last week where we simulated someone in the water in trouble and bringing those, that person out of the water and bringing him up to Lake Shore Drive. And tonight, they're doing a hazmat refresh. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions, and if it's okay, I'm going to break away and go back to our training that's going on.
I do have a quick question, unless you wanted to have a question first, Joy.
No, go ahead.
So Chief shared with us that, and I just want to share again how the police department and the volunteer fire department work together. Resident who shared a thank you with us, who lived on Fairway Drive. And there were a couple of calls about, it happened to be her husband who fell a few times. And the first time, the, I'm trying to think, some of the volunteers EMT came and the volunteers, the non-emergency numbers, so that was probably the fire department. The second time, Chief Swistec and another officer came and helped. And the last time, the third time was again, the Long Beach Fire Department. So, you know, the fact, and she was very thankful for the support. And it just, again, shows that, again, whoever is here, if the call is quicker, or all the people come from the fire department.
Anita, I could say at every meeting, I'm thankful for the relationship that we have with the police because we are working together. And you can almost count on a street officer being there. And that's a, in the middle of the night, that's a welcome thought. And it's greatly appreciated. We probably don't say it often enough. So, thank you.
And then the other comment was, when someone calls in that a boat or something has I don't know how it is that you figure out what it is, but is that something ever that Chief Swistec, that you would at some point call the boat? I mean, I know you'd have to go to the harbor and get it, but like, at what point would a boat be valuable for that kind of a thing? Or would the fire department have to determine, like, how do you determine? Do you have binoculars to see if someone needs to swim out there? Or how do you know that, or how do you know how to get somebody?
What you have to do is you have to look at the conditions. If it's winds out of the south, lakes flat, someone's having problems, it's not maybe that urgent, but it could be. The winds out of the north and lake is stirred up, that's a different scenario. So you have to judge it by the conditions of the lake. And like you say, looking, if you, if you say someone's just trying to ride the boat, it may take a few tries. But right now with, if we happen to have a call and we're fortunate enough to do it when the Michigan City Coast Guard Station is staffed, well, that's a good thing. If it's not, it's, it's not a good thing. So playing it by ear. But once again, Mark's officers will probably, they'll probably be, I, I'm not sure. I think the 911 center, they probably talked to Long Beach Police. And then the street officer is making a decision, should we tone out the fire department? And then once we do, we have binocs, we have life vests. But we're not going to send people in the water because then we could have too serious problems. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. The Fire Commission met on 7/17. New fire trucks were discussed. The E1 replacement is expected delivery this fall. The E2 replacement is expected to be ordered in 2026. Recent training initiatives were discussed, particularly places with no water supply. Like Ridge Road and Summit Drive has no hydrants. Moon Valley, they did some practicing in. Golf Course, they did some practicing in because there's no water in those areas. And like Dave said, they had the Hitchcock Burn Tower. Engine number two maintenance was discussed. We will need new PPEs in the next five years, so we're hopeful for some grants. Public Safety Building had a new vent fan in the gear, gear storage area. And the annual HVAC maintenance for public outreach. The fire department is now doing quarterly CPR classes. And they're putting a blurb in the town newsletter and they have a Facebook page. And I was told that for the first time ever, they ran out of ice cream at the ice cream social. And they had 150 gallons.
Someone else bad.
Oh. Okay. Well, it appears that a great time was had by all. So, thank you. And 50 to 60 pounds of popcorn you popped. Oh. So, thank you, guys, for all you do. That Fire Commission meets quarterly, so we meet after the Police Commission in another four months. Three months. Sorry. Public Works, Kendra.
We meet quarterly as well, so we had the meeting on Monday, July 28th. Couple highlights, the final numbers for the CCMG paving project are in, and that's on our agenda today to approve and get, get that paid off. That'll be finished. The F-550 truck is delivery update, that's on its way. I guess they're putting some finishing touches on that, and that should be here shortly. Looks like we're probably going to need an additional snowplow truck. So that's just been sent over to the Budget and Finance Committee to look at that and give recommendations. The Lake Shore Drive engineering study with Hassan Associates will be sometime in August. And then we'll have budget estimates to share in the fall. Fire hydrant painting has been done in most of the town. The east end of town will be done in the spring, but everything else is done. A new F-250 truck for the water department is sent over to Budget and Finance as well to look at quotes and to get some feedback on that. I guess we had a portable generator that we sold to El Cart, so made a little money off that. I don't know how much for though. But I think that's it, Mark. I know you were not there, but did I miss anything? Nope. Okay.
Thank you. Park Board, Zach.
All right. I'm here today in person because we've got a couple of things to talk about that are fairly important and new. So I wanted to be here to answer questions, but just standard updates. So summer camp is over. It's, it was a very successful summer. Maddie Dowdy, it was her first year doing it. Did a terrific job. We've had a lot of very good positive reviews out of folks about how she handled the, the camp this year. And Sarah Bluster was also in the background, kind of coming in, checking on things and auditing, if you will, and helping Maddie when she needed to. And according to Sarah, she didn't need a lot of help. So very good year for summer camp. Art in the Park just happened last weekend, went where, went very well, aside from the weather. We had to move it into the gym, but special thanks to Sue Keenan and Elena from the Parks Board for helping to coordinate that. It was still a pretty good event, well-attended, and everyone had a good time. So we'll continue to, to do that every year. Stop 29 is our, you know, Joy had sent me a note about, you know, our budget for the year. We've, we've got a lot of money left to spend in our budget. This is one of the projects that needs to get done. And the, the quotes we're getting in so far, quite a bit more than we thought they were going to be. So that's going to, that's going to drain some of that money that you see in our budget. We are looking for two more quotes for 29. We have to redo the entire boardwalk from down where the aluminum steps or this aluminum track starts all the way up to the street. And according to Larry, that involves a lot of footers that are not properly footed today. So every four by four that's going into the sand is going to have to have a properly poured footer or a helical pile driven in. That's what's making the price of it go up so high. But we are going to get that done this fall, one way or the other. And last reminder, you know, we haven't, I haven't had to talk about this in probably three years, but we, we just came up again this last week, last couple of weeks, people leaving items down on stops, on stop property. I put a few announcements up and pictures on Facebook, and the next day, just about all those items were removed, which is great. So people are reading the Facebook and they're, they're looking at that. And then we put a few stickers on some of the other items and picked them up like we said we were going to do. So just a reminder to the town that, that we do pick up items that are left at the, on public property after 24 hours if they're still sitting down there after we put a sticker on them. So otherwise, that rule is, has really been well-accepted by the community. The other topic I wanted to bring up is, is a fairly big one. So a few months ago, you know, we, we definitely know that we need a new tennis court. And one way or the other, we're going to have to repave it, completely redo the tennis court. And then pickleballers have been coming to our meetings, sending emails, talking to us about available sole pickleball courts that are just fit for purpose, just for pickleballers to be in our town. And, and so we, we had one meeting where this entire room was just full of people who play pickleball. They're motivated, they're, they're excited about what, what can they do to help? What are the ideas they had for us? And so we asked them, you know, if any of you guys can help us with fundraising, we don't have the money in our budget to do the tennis courts and build new pickleball courts at the same time. Well, that's led to a whole lot of talk about fundraising in the background. And this group of pickleballers and a few other folks in the town, highly motivated people, are actively looking at raising funds for the park to put various new aspects or, or new parts of a park out here in our, in our public space. Replace some of the things that we have today, put things in there that we don't have today. Some of the items that we're talking about is to replace the tennis courts as they are. Putting in brand-new pickleball courts in the back. New volleyball court, a new park, replacing the one that we have today with, with, with the proper park matting instead of using mulch. Mini soccer, a pavilion, and a few other items. I'm not going to list all of them, but it's a pretty ambitious overall scheme of what could be done in the park. Not all of these things are going to get funded, or not all of these things are going to be decided to be done. But, but this group is working on this. The Park Board is actively working with the Building Commission. I've got a meeting with Larry Wall in the morning, matter of fact, to talk about what would have to be true in the lots that we have back here to be able to do any of these things that we're talking about, or what pieces of them could we do and still be within our building code. Park Board is also working on funding and grants that the town could get, state of Indiana or from whomever, so that we can pitch in funds from the town, so it's not just a solely public-funded park or parts of a park that, that the town can also chip in, the Parks Board could also chip in. This group is also looking at potentially having corporate sponsorships with possible naming rights on aspects of this park, which, you know, is not something that we've ever wanted to entertain as the Park Board. But if we could get secure, you know, funding enough to build pickleball courts, build tennis courts, I'm open to that, and the rest of the Park Board is open to that as a discussion point. So that would be something new. Other things I wanted to point out, all town ordinances are going to be followed throughout this whole process. It's, it's something that a lot of the folks that are raising the funds don't really truly understand. I don't even truly understand it, but, but I, I have an idea of all the things that we're going to be up against to be able to get this through with the Building Commission, possibly the BZA. Opinions of townsfolk about what we should and shouldn't do with this park. We are all very concerned about maintaining our green space out there, maintaining the trees that we have out there. So there's a lot to consider. If we're going to do a significant amount of these things, how are we going to get all those done and not violate our own ordinances, which we won't do. And we need a survey, so I was glad to hear the survey is completed. We'll have that hopefully in a couple of weeks. That is really the first step, is to get that survey done. And what is the space we have? How many lots? The next step is going to be to get some architectural drawings. So that's going to be another part of our budget that we've been holding back for this year so that we can get some proper architectural drawings of the elements of these parks that we're looking at and where they would go, how they would look, what fences would look like if they were aware. You know, there's a lot to consider. So we want to see 3D drawings and renderings of all the aspects of the park, which is which is going to cost some money that we will fund, not not have that done through donations, I don't believe. And then we've had some talk about project management. It's going to be a large project that there's nobody on the Parks Board that has the time to fully, you know, commit to managing a project of that size. But there are people out there that are willing to donate their time to project manage various aspects of this. So the tennis courts could be an aspect, the pickleball courts could be an aspect, a pavilion, you know, could be managed by a specific person that's got project management skills. So, you know, this is a very ambitious thing. When we, when we first heard about it, I was, I was a little bit excited and I was apprehensive as well because I know how things could be and how difficult even doing things like, you know, the Public Safety Building can be in the town and everyone's got opinions. But we're going to, I'm going to communicate properly. We're going to start this process slowly and and bring all the ideas to the Town Council and to Park Board meetings. So you guys can all participate in the process. So that's why I came today. Any questions about any of that?
My only question, do you think it would be a good idea if we put a question on the comprehensive survey about what people would like to see over there?
Is it, we have time to do that?
I already do. It says, would you like to see more of this, that? And it's got lists, things.
I know, but it's not very specific.
I have a specific list of the things that people are talking about, putting in front of us. I would imagine a handful of those will probably get approved and then a handful of those probably be funded. I would, we want to, we want to be breaking ground on something this year. Specifically tennis courts, pickleball courts are the things that people have been very aggressively coming to us about. And I, they're the most used things we have in this town, aside from the beach and possibly the community center. But we could, I can get you a list of all those items and then people could fill out what they would like to see and not like to see.
That's just certain people, though. Pickleball people would eat some. I do have a couple of comments and one is that we've talked in the past about doing things over in the park. One was expanding the pathway so that stroll chairs could walk through there. That never happened. It never fit in the budget. We talked about putting umbrellas over tables or then getting sun shades so that kids weren't roasting on the and the playground. And that never happened. It was too expensive. I mean, we, that we've been talking at the Advisory Plan Commission about funding the update to the 2016 Comprehensive Plan since January. The Clerk Treasurer approved it in January. So at every meeting, we've been talking about it and we now just have a draft of the questions. So I have a sense that while the pickleball players are very anxious and they filled the room one time, then they don't come back again. Or they are working behind the scenes, but they're not working with APC. So now we have this survey that's going to be coming out and they're working with you and we're working with us and we still have to work with all the residents. And then it and and it's like then, then we, you talk about like when, and I will stick with what Norm Brummer came when he said, Norm has worked with the, in the town. I mean, he's worked with tennis, with pickleball, and he talks about being conservative. And I think Chief Swistec, I've noticed when I walk by that on certain days, I think there's a group from Michigan that's using the courts. There are many times the courts aren't used at all. And what Norm talked about was that people have managed how to use the courts. They figure it out. They know where to park, where their cars fit, where their bikes fit, where their golf carts. And I think Norm's whole point was, look what happened in Michiana, where, you know, they have to, they don't charge parking for everywhere. I talked to Ann Haywood. It's just in front, in front of the town hall because otherwise people couldn't park there to do some business. But it's like, if you build it, they will come. And I think Kayla, the other day, mentioned that finally Michigan City is doing something in Washington Park. I don't know the scope of it at all. And and so it sounds like a, you know, a great plan, but it's just so over, you know, I mean, so it's great. But you talk about wanting to get this done this year. And I'm not sure like how that fits into how we survey all the residents, which is what we would like to do on APC. When you're already, you know, I mean, moving forward with now we have the survey and, you know, and of course you want to work with all the ordinances, right? And with Larry Ball. So I don't know how you pick and choose and how you decide that you want to have all new pickleboards, you know, courts and then separate tennis courts or something like that. I don't know. I mean, how, how many people now still play handball when handball was so popular before? Or, you know, school, I don't know what other sports.
I mean, all we can do is 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 build the plan and show it to everybody, you know, and let, let everyone talk about it, you know. If people don't feel like we need four pickleball courts, we want two, then so be it. Then maybe that's what we do and and leave the tennis courts alone. There's a lot of ways to look at this.
Yeah, I mean, I just worry about.
Do anything if we, if we just talk about it, we won't do anything. We want to have a new tennis court until.
I mean, I worry about the cost of the roof. The Lake Shore Drive paving is going to be another huge project. You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, different things. And I love that, you know, people are talking about it and they're getting excited about it because it's the it sport, right? So, yeah, I mean, so I think, you know, the pickleball people are extremely vocal.
They, they fill that court every day. My kid, I have young kids. There are young kids at the park every day in the fall, spring, summer. One of the things that I am very concerned about with this, it is a bunch of adults that seem to be taking more and more space away from what that land, what that space was originally designed for, which was children. And the, they, the plan, some of the plan that I heard from someone who's very involved in it is taking space that can be used for anything, imaginative play, whatever it is, and putting single use things in there. I don't like that. I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm very excited to see what you guys come up with. You know, I heard a skate park. We don't need a skate park. We don't need a dog park.
Yeah.
We don't need those things. I think tennis courts and pickleball courts are great because it is a very vocal group, is a very active community in our little town. I don't think we need to be taking away area and land that can be used for so many different things. The, the parents of small children are not a vocal group. I'm not a vocal person about what my kids do in that park or what my extended family does in that park. But taking away the land that we use weekly.
Yeah, so can I?
Difficult for me to stop.
Right, so.
So that's my opinion. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just let me, so a couple of things have happened in the background, which is how you're getting the information you're getting. So, so somebody developed a brochure.
I didn't see that. This is like, just talking.
Right, but this, this word of mouth has got around. So the, if you, they took a satellite view of the park and and just put things in there as could fit. And, you know, we could do this, we could do this, we could do this, we could do that. The only thing that's not, I would say, kid focused is the pickleball courts. Everything else are things that are geared towards children.
Sure.
But just let me, let me finish. But that, that was not meant to be a literal plan. And I cautioned the whole group of them and said, once this thing is out in the ether, it's not just what could we do? It's this is the plan. That is not going to be what happens. So, so there's going to be very, we may decide to do half or a third of what all those things are. Because I'm really concerned about keeping that space out there green and open.
Sure, I, I appreciate that. I grew up here and my kids, we've been here for, I mean, they're sitting in the audience right now. I mean, like, from the time that I could push their stroller, like, you know, picking daisies rolling in the grass. And now, you know, I love, I love that there's a volleyball court. Like, I'm all for that. But, you know, I just, I'm very hesitant to take away some of that open space that can be used for looking for fairy rings around a tree to put in, you know, a sand volleyball court, which we don't need because we have a giant sand volleyball court to block the way. So that, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, totally understand.
I just found out there was a forest there a while ago. Who told me that? Joy or Meg? Who played in the forest?
Bear Forest.
Bear Forest. Did you know Bear Forest, Meg or Colleen? Do you know Bear Forest?
There when I attended camp growing up.
Where was it?
Next to the.
And then Joy said they did, the one day Bear Forest was gone. So we have to be careful, I guess, about our trees.
Well, I, I knew there was going to be a lot of this and that's why I wanted to get the conversation started and do it in a, you know, be upfront about all of it. If we need to have somebody come to APC, we can have somebody come to APC. We can, you know, help us communicate better and we will do that.
Okay, sounds good. Does anybody have any more questions for Zach?
I only have one comment. You had said that about parks contributing to the architectural drawings. That would be a council decision? Is that?
Not sure it would be.
If it's, if it's not capital, that would be part of the park's budget. But if it was, I guess.
It's not a specific item in our, the tennis courts were an item in our budget, not the scope of this.
Right, but so just keep in mind, it all has to be approved, those types of, because even right now, our capital is short next year. So just keep in mind the procedure of approval.
Okay, I'll talk to you before you do anything like that. Yeah, for sure.
I think it's, it's not so much, I would have to let you know if it can work, but I think it's council approval to.
I don't understand the line between if we're going to do, you know, stop 29, for example, versus this. We know we wouldn't get stop, council approval to do, to pay stop 29, right?
It would just be in the buckets of improvement, like, right? There's all those, the Park Board has improvements, but they could just simple.
Well, so Parks has a certain amount of capital each year. And I believe, I think I know where you guys are roughly at. So if it falls outside of that.
It won't fall outside of that. That's what I'm saying.
But it, but that's, that was my point on this architectural. I think Parks has to come to council to get that approved if it falls out of your, outside of your operational budget.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll, we'll figure that out before we do anything, for sure.
Yeah, that's right. Zach has his fingers on the pulse of that. As long as talks to you about it before it's in the budget gets to. And if not, you guys figure out what that workaround is.
Yeah, there's a lot of admin stuff to do around this whole thing, too, that we're just getting into the beginning of it. So anyway.
And Zach, AP, sorry, APC is meeting a week from tonight at seven. So, I mean, you and I can talk before about questions. We're just going to be going over the first set of survey questions that have been given to us and it's been sent to the council and to APC members to look at and and their comments. So I guess, Joy, would that be, did you want to talk to Zach? Or I can just talk to Zach about what he might want to think should be added into the questions or how to add it?
If Zach could just give you the information and then maybe at your APC meeting, you guys can come up with questions.
Okay.
Yeah, can do that.
Okay, great.
Next week, you say? Next week?
Monday, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Community Center Anita.
Community Center met on August 4th. There are things that are coming up following in the agenda about a possible new tenant improvements to room three and the front walkways. The other thing that came up quite a bit is the Community Center Management Team is really often in the community center just making minor repairs. So thank you to Doug Wickstrum, Jimmy Nyleb and Larry Brown and Chief Swistec, who seems to be living everywhere now, doing all kinds of things. So a couple of the big issues are coming up later. And Cody and Tom and Greg and who'd I forget? Austin, they're all living just all over the town. So thank you. And our next meeting is, what's our next meeting? Sometime in September. First Monday in September. Thank you. Okay, well, we'll be there because it's Chief Swistec. So he's never sleeping. So we'll be there.
Okay, thank you. Budget and Finance, Meg.
Budget and Finance met August 5th and we went through the projections by fund and continued work on the budget. And then the committee, along with the two council members who are on the committee, discussed the cost of living increase potentials for employees. And discussion on that will continue through the budget process. If needed, an additional meeting will be held in between now and the next regularly scheduled budget meeting to keep reviewing the budget. The next meeting is scheduled for September 2nd. And that's with the first reading of the budget at the September 8th council meeting and the second reading at the October 13th meeting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Tree Board Ellen. Thank you.
HR.
Okay.
You've been recently missed HR.
Oh, I'm sorry, HR Cindy.
Okay. HR Committee met Monday, July 21st. In attendance were Chief Swistec, Clerk Meg Collins, Beth White and myself. The Labor Attorney is reviewing the employee handbook. There is discussion on 2026 employee pay increases. The 2026 growth quotient is 4%, which will be a increase for town employees. There's discussion on public safety employee retire benefits. There's an ordinance, you know, proposal that we will talk about. And that is employees with 20 years of service and 50 years of age will be eligible for 30% contribution to their healthcare premiums from the town. And employees with 30 years of service and 50 years of age will be eligible for 50% contribution of their healthcare premiums from the town. Discussion of updates to the employee handbook about overtime and P T O conversions. Employees are eligible to convert overtime pay to P T O hours at a rate of 1.5 hours of P T O for overtime work subject to their supervisor's approval. And the meeting adjourned at 2:08 and the next meeting will be Wednesday, August 20th at 1:30.
Thank you. Could I just add the review of the handbook has come back to the committee? So we will pick that up with our continued, hopefully getting close to the final review to have it completed by the end of the year and hopefully implemented in January. So we will be reviewing what that labor attorney got back to us since we had had our HR meeting.
Okay, thank you. Building Commission met on August 8th. As the MS4 Coordinator, Larry is going to start attending our Stormwater Board meetings. The permits approved were 2219 Oriole Trail for a pool and a fence, 1636 Lake Shore Drive for sand maintenance, 1509 Lake Shore Drive for an extended roof over an existing deck, 2949 Lake Shore Drive, extend the curb on Ribbed Road, 2930 Lothair being re-roofed. And I would like to mention that both of those last two, 2949 Lake Shore Drive and 2930 Lothair, Larry Wall recused himself and Pete Bye votes took over the meeting. 1530 Lake Shore Drive is a total remodel. No permits were denied and the next meeting is 9/12/2025. The B Z A is going to meet on Wednesday. There's a preliminary hearing for 2520 Shorewood Drive, which is Yellow Bear Farms for a greenhouse and a preliminary hearing for 3013 Loma Portal Way to store a boat in the side yard. Any questions? Okay, APC Anita.
APC met, it had no July meeting. Our meeting, our next meeting is a week from today, August 18th. The committee will begin discussion of the survey questions that were submitted to us from McCann. That will help where we will start to, in our update to the 26 Comprehensive Plan. So hopefully people will start tuning in and the committee will start working on the questions and we'll continue to keep moving on that update.
Thank you. Building Revenue Report for July, Meg.
For July, there were 31 permits issued totaling $2,550,697 with $28,278.25. There was one electric permit issued for $120 and four street cut permits with revenue of $400. Legal expenses paid in July to Braji Nelson and James were $5,895.25. Accounting expenses paid to Sender and Company were $5,893.90. And that Cory Dawn at the bottom was actually from June. So we will remove that and I will make a note in the minutes. I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Under unfinished business, we have committee openings. We have two vacancies on Budget and Finance and one vacancy on the Building Commission. So, uh, Meg, maybe we could advertise or put a blurb out on the website?
So I added, uh, an.
We had on there before, um.
Right.
A pretty extensive thing for the Building Commission.
Okay.
The only thing we would have to add to it, that you need to be a resident.
Okay, so I had added one for that original Budget and Finance opening, so I can, uh, change that to two openings and then find that Building Commission and include it as well. When you say advertise, are you thinking?
No, I just.
Oh, just put it on the website for now?
Put it on the website.
Okay.
Or if anyone knows anybody that's interested, please let me know. And Ellen, welcome to the Building Commission. She had her first meeting, and she's still gonna come back.
Joy, we could, we could do an email blast at some point i- if we feel like that would spread the word more. So if council, maybe by next meeting, if we have, uh, any thoughts?
Okay, Swistec just said we haven't sent an email blast in a while, so maybe that's a thought to discuss with you? Yep, yes.
Yeah, I would agree with Meg on the email blast. We haven't sent one out in a couple of weeks, so it wouldn't hurt to get that information out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will put that together.
Uh, Lake Shore Sewer LLC, we received no new info on that, so let's table that until the next meeting. Uh, do we have anything on town signs?
Yeah, we do, Cindy and I are very excited.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've had quite the, um, sometimes easy but mostly hard time getting quotes for things. And right now, we just ask for, you know, soft quotes. By no means, obviously, you know, if, whatever we can do when the time comes, things need to be, um, more quotes put out, not necessarily for bids, but. So we've gotten, um, quotes, and I'll just say for both, spanning from huge to reasonable. So basically, um, we could do. I guess my point is, how can we move forward with, like, capital being short next year? Or where is there funds? Can we start to talk about what we can do for 2026 to have some money to do some of those town signs? So the sign entrances by Hacienda, the pillars that are reminiscent of the pillars that when you go into the stops, would be about 30,000 total, about 12,000 for each side, about 13,000, 13,000, curved ones with the concrete on top with lighting, like, the whole, the whole kit and caboodle on those. And then the smaller versions, um, that the sign committee came up with, are just like straight pillars, like when you enter Moore Road, because there's not even enough space there to do the curves. And those run about 12,000 total, six and six for each side. And if we were to do Lake Shore Drive, same thing, those pillars, um, just straight, so less expensive. And then replacing the town beach signs, the Stop 24, Stop 25, the black ones that you see really are quite mismatched. Um, they're not horrible by any means, but some of the paint's chipping, and, um, people have posted signs on them that strip the paint, and they're just old. So we could redo all of those signs for about $500 each, we think. Again, this is just soft quotes we got from people we know we would need to. Um, I did walk the property with the masonry guy for the pillars, so those, even though that's a soft quote, that's pretty spot on. The, um, signs is still spot on, but they would need to, I mean, we would probably have Tom install them, we could stay on installation, but, you know, we could, the cost might go up if we decided to not do black aluminum, if we wanted to do black steel or something like that. But, I mean, Cindy started with a quote, your first quote was $5,000 a sign, and I got $500 a sign. So we've been through, yeah. So, um, you know, just ballparking, like, 30,000 for the Hacienda entrance, 12,042, it's like, if we could earmark somehow, like, 70,000 or 60,000 or something to look at for 2026, um, would that be doable? Could we do that? Could we just do maybe, I mean, that would be, I think, our wish list. Or even split it up and just do maybe the Hacienda entrance and the signs, the stop signs, and, and wait on the, the pillars by Moore Road and Lake Shore Drive for a later date. Like, you could chop it up a bunch of different ways. But since budgeting's going on right now for, in August, and that'll all be set for 2026, we wanted to get on the list somehow.
Yeah, I think we should budget what we can for 2026, and then see what we can do with that, in my opinion.
Does that mean Meg crunching numbers? Is that what that means?
I think through the budget process, we need to look at the capital plan still and more. So I, I'm making a note to add this into the capital plan, and then Budget and Finance will look at. And we need information on Lake Shore Drive, which is also coming up. And then council will prioritize and make decisions about what we can do next year. Trista did speak to us briefly at the Budget and Finance meeting about the legislation and what it means for Long Beach with a 30 to $40,000 number in, you know, less tax levy that we would receive. So that's all being considered, along with, you know, raises and the various parts of the budget. We still, you know, we might, we're maybe halfway through this timeline of the budget. So, uh, I'd say by the first readings at the September meeting. So by the end, the next two, three weeks are, uh, I'll be doing more work on it, and then again, looking at the capital plan.
I.
So I can let you know.
Forgot to add an expense that would need to be, um, we would need a survey for that lease to Hacienda location. I mean, in a perfect world, if we had the money to do, if you thought, okay, we're gonna have money to do Lake Shore Drive, too, then that would also need a survey. But somehow, I feel like that's not.
I think Lake Shore Drive, she's talking about paving.
No, but I know, but I'm saying, enter, um, so I said, like, 75 grand for this, but then I forgot that those places still needed to be surveyed. So I have to add in the cost for a survey over by Hacienda, and then if we thought we could fund the columns on Lake Shore Drive, a survey for the Lake Shore Drive area, too. But, um, this, at least the stop signs here. But, so I guess it, it'd have to bump up my 75,000 even a little more, or just.
I was gonna say, do you have any idea what, for example, the Lake Shore Drive would cost for the survey, or could you?
I don't have any idea about survey costs. You, what did the Park Board survey just?
Nine, 9,000 for across the street, so you're probably.
Almost 10. Does it, does it go by, um, like, how big of an area they're doing? Or is it, like, how do they, well, I guess we'll figure out that when it comes, because that Hacienda area is pretty specific. I mean, we just need to know, you know?
Yeah, I think if.
Small area.
This is just my thought. When we do paving, the town pays 25%, CCMG grant hopefully stays at 75%. If we don't do paving, we save, we can save or spend our portion. Certain funds like Stormwater accumulate over time, and we can use that money towards the Stormwater portions of CCMG. Depending, I think Lake Shore Drive's just so unique. It, we can do it in stages of two, three, four years. If we skip a year of paving, we're, we're losing out on the CCMG grant. So I, I think those answers are really key in how much we have available for other projects and what takes precedence, so.
And Meg, I do think that having Trista there, and I know you invited her to be there, and I think it was important that she be there. She explained, I mean, quite a bit about Senate Bill 1 and the ramifications. And there were many instances where she talked about holding off until April. I mean, and, and we, we have gone through the capital plan extensively. I mean, I mean, I'm the liaison for the Community Center, and, I mean, they have repeatedly told us to hold back a fifth of our, that, our budget is what it is, and hold back a fifth of it. Just, it's, I, you, you are really crunching numbers, Meg, and I appreciate it. And we've been doing it at every budget meeting, so.
Well, and I think the capital plan is that we're evolving, and certain, certain projects happen timely, some of them are taking a little bit longer. So I just need to finish updating what we've spent this year, and again, finding out some of these answers on Lake Shore Drive. It's good to know about this project. We can at least add it in there and see it all as a whole and where we're at for the next two years.
Do you need the official soft quotes from the people, or just want me to write an email?
If you can email them to me, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yes, I did take a few notes and can reference this meeting, but that would be helpful.
Okay.
Kendra, Kendra, I think on the, um, beach stop signs at the individual stops, the black ones that we currently have, we may be able to, in next year's budget, use some operating expense from like right-of-way maintenance, where maybe we could tackle a few of those. We can work with Meg.
That's a good idea.
Typically, it's within the town's right-of-way, so we do have an operating expense for that. So maybe I'll work with you, get some of the costs associated to that. Maybe we start with four to six of those next year, and then see how many we can get done. And then we'll look at other buckets that we can maybe pull from funds as well.
Okay.
So this way, it doesn't have to go to the capital side. We could take it out of the operating side.
Okay, good idea.
But we'll, we'll look at it.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Police Retirement Benefits. Are we just doing the first reading of the ordinance? Or Chief, do you have something?
Just for historical, the reason this is before the council is previously, we really didn't have it memorialized as far as the benefit in writing. Prior, a retired police officer was receiving 100% of their healthcare benefit paid for by the town. Obviously, we no longer want to continue that, so we changed it to 50%. Now, the ordinance or the resolution in front of you has, um, 50% at 30 years and 30% at 20 years that the town would be responsible for. Um, and then I'll let Chris kind of explain.
Yeah, this is a resolution, so you can pass it this evening. It includes the, the changes that we have discussed, but I know, um, last month, I went back to the drawing board a little bit because there was that discussion between the percentages and future costs. I do think it's important to note, and Trista and I discussed this, too, the requirements, so you have some code sections that are, are noted in there that are Indiana code sections. And to summarize and remind everybody, if you provide benefits, then retired public safety officers are entitled to health benefits after retirement. The nuance, this extra provision, is what you are choosing to do to contribute to pay for those. So there's a difference there. You're making it available if you have it available in the town. That's what the law says that retired public safety officers are entitled to. You, as the town has generally tended to do, go above and beyond. So you're choosing to contribute. One of the other things that we've written in there is if other insurance becomes available through employment or a spouse, et cetera, that, that take precedence, right? That does not mean that you still, you're still required to offer them insurance. You are not required to contribute. And so that's why that notation is in there, and just want to make sure that part's clear. But otherwise, it's a matter of what your preference is. And this is, the base, the, the change is the 20-year and 30-year marks, as well as the attaining the age of 50, that, that comes at the recommendation of your advisory committee below.
So we didn't really, because I know last month, we talked about what, I don't think we decided, right? I think we talked about the, right, the 20 years for 50%. I think Colleen mentioned 20 years for 50. So now we've got, like, if you're there 20 years, it's 30%. So we, we can decide how many years in the percentage, correct?
You have the choice. This came back because HR Committee went back to the drawing board and discussed, and with the recommendations and, and Chief in the Department's input and what others are doing. But yes, you're the ultimate, um, decision maker as to what you choose to do. This is just going back after additional conversation. Colleen raised some of her concerns, and I think all of those were taken into account. But, yeah, at the end of the day, you could decide, you don't want to pass this this evening, and you want to have more discussion or changes, you're absolutely able to do that.
Okay, we've got Ordinance 2025-05.
Res- Resolution.
Resolution 2025-008, Resolution of the Town Council of Long Beach, Indiana, Amending and Restating Health Insurance Benefits for Retired Public Safety Employees Policy. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve it?
I'll second. Do we have any discussion?
Um, I, I'm, I'm kind of torn about what to do about a 20-year employer, or whether we go in between to a 25-year employee for 50%. I mean, I, I guess, after 20 years, it's quite a bit of time, and just to pay 30% seems a little bit low to me.
Well, I think one of the things to consider, and sorry, I don't want to speak over those that participated at committee, but one significant change here is pointing out that reaching these, as well as attaining the age of 50, right? That could be a long haul that you're carrying those costs. And again, it's, that's up to you, and I'll defer to those that participated at the committee level, because they, they're the ones who had the more in-depth discussion about.
I think it's perfectly reasonable to incentivize good employees to stay longer. I mean, it's, I think it's very rare in this day and age that someone will stay somewhere for 20 or 30 years. But I, I think, you know, we have a good chief. I'm assuming that we'll have a good chief for a very long time. And I do, yeah, I mean, I do think it's, it's, it's reasonable to incentivize good employees to stay as long as we can keep them. So, I mean, I think it's fine to stagger or do this, and I don't know the right word for it, the HR term, but, um, I'm okay with this, for sure.
So they have to reach 50 to get 20?
And Anita, part of the discussion was, it's, you know.
I'm nodding to myself.
Currently now, I mean, we don't know, of course, what Medicare age could be pushed back to, but as of now, we would be responsible for that payment for 15 years, you know, from 50 to 65, and healthcare costs are growing so much that we thought, you know, just to protect the town, not to, you know, overextend too much if it's 30% at 20 years, and then, um, for the 50% for 30 years. That, like Colleen said, that's really a nice incentive for a long term.
It really is. I think it's a good incentive to keep someone working and adding, I mean, you know, I mean, I think it's, okay.
All right, then, since the HR Committee has had discussion about it and thoughtful discussion.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, Ordinance Number 2025-05, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Long Beach, La Porte County, Indiana, amending Title 15, Chapter 154, 4.113, and Title 7, Chapter 72, Section 72.04 and 72.13A, Parking Regulations and Restriction. First reading.
Can I make a correction there? Because it is noted on the agenda as first reading. You don't have to go through the normal procedure because the public input and public hearing process took place at the APC level. Last month, you made an amendment, which was simply to add the language regarding duly's that are registered in a personal name. That was done, and after looking into it a little bit more, that did not need to go back to the APC. So that, the change in the draft before you reflects that small amendment. And so if you were inclined to approve that as amended, then that will become law. So you don't need to go through the normal procedure, and that is a nuance in the, um, planning and zoning code of the area of the Indiana code.
Okay, thank you. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, second reading of Ordinance 2025-06, Additional Appropriations. Uh, second reading of ordinance 2025-06, additional appropriations, published 72925. I would make a motion to approve on second reading.
I'll second it.
And before you go further, Meg, that publication.
The date is, oh, go ahead.
So you publish that for public hearing as well, right?
Correct, correct. Although I have the date of, of adoption incorrect, so I will reprint that before we sign after the meeting.
Yes, so it would be appropriate for you to open public hearing and entertain comments for and against.
Okay. We will open the public hearing for the second reading on additional appropriations. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak against the ordinance? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we will close the public hearing.
That would be appropriate for your motions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business, Hassan Associates Pay Recommendation Number Three to Reeve Riley Construction, 2024-2 CCMG's Street Improvement Project, $731, $37,916.89 for payment approval. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Then second, I thought you said you had a motion.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, just for the record, you'll see the pay application number four at your September meeting as there are a few loose ends to tie up still, but that will be presented to you at September. So that should be the final one.
Thank you. Hassan Associates, 2024-2 CCMG Invoice Number 14 for $16,975.36 for payment approval. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Reeve Riley Construction Maintenance Building Paving Invoice Number 3620464-06 for payment approval for $25,224.20. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to new business, Community Center ADA Walkway Proposals From Vertical Custom Creation and Deutscher Construction.
Want me to take that, chief? Uh, this is one of the ongoing projects at the community center. They've been working on the front door for, the front area for a couple of years and all within their budget. And this just kind of would complete, I think, well, they're still looking at windows, but this would complete the front way of the, the three doors in the front of the community center. And they have had, I think they had three, three different estimates. They've been back and forth on this, so this is an updated estimate. They'll take out the bricks in the front. The bricks that are inscribed with names will be placed in a separate area, but still in the front of the building. That was something that was important. I know Joy's been in charge of the memorial bricks and those bricks. So those bricks will stay there just in a separate area. The other new memorial area is where the, all the other bricks are going. There's, uh, it's going to provide a handicapped accessible walk. The handicap accessible bathroom is all done. We've talked about at some point in the future, putting in one of those buttons. I think we talked about that, but that again is in the future. But this will, will really complete the front of that building. The planters have been done by the beach, I don't know who, Ellen and Janice really kind of did a lot of work for that. Yeah. Babies are eating everything. And some of the, some town personnel will help some work. Jim Nyleb has offered to help with some of the work. There was, I think for the bathroom, they, didn't they say they came in a thousand dollars under budget? Or they did come under budget for that work. So they're pretty, uh, they're good about helping out where they can and not charging the town. So what we are looking for is, looking for here, chief, I forgot to write.
11,100.
$11,100. And that is within our budget and that will be work that will be completed this year, which will allow the concrete to cure so that the salt will not ruin it. And again, it's within our budget. They have had plenty of thought put into it. They've had lots of estimates back and forth. So what the community center is asking is that you approve the budget or approve the $11,100 and they can get to work on the front walk project.
Quick question, Cindy, big thank you to you for the Unity Foundation grant. Do you have any idea maybe when we may find out?
Uh, we should be notified in September.
Okay, one of the reasons that we wanted to present this at tonight's meeting is to lock in the contractor. We're having a difficult time getting contractors, first to get us quotes and second to get on their schedule. So we had put this in front of the council tonight at the request of the committee so that we could at least get it approved, lock in the contractor, and then hopefully here on Cindy's grant around the same time. And then that 5,000 that she applied for, if approved, would go towards this $11,100 request, therefore making the town's contribution $6,100.
We can hope.
We can hope. So I need to make a motion to approve the $11,100 for the community center work on the front walk.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Light Body Studio Tenant Proposal For Room Number Three At The Community Center. Chief, you want to tell us about this? I, I got the information and I read it, but it's like a hundred pages.
It is. So just before tonight's council meeting, I had shared the email that was sent to everyone back on, I don't know, around Tuesday, July 22nd. So we have availability in the community center and room number three. It was previously rented to the building department. They utilized it for numerous years. We have freed up that space. It needs quite a bit of renovation and we now have a potential tenant, which is Paige Rummer. Paige is the owner operator of Light Body Studio. It is a business that concentrates on therapeutic services to include massage and other holistic type therapy. We've met with Paige, the community center committee has. We have checked her reference from her previous renter. We looked over her business proposal. And after meeting with her is the recommendation of the community center that we recommend to the town council to move forward with a one-year lease for room three to Light Body Studio. The rent would be $550 per month for the first 12 months and then subject to any increases thereafter, as would be with any of the other tenants within our community center. So that is the request before you and then we can talk about the renovations to that particular room on the next agenda item. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, there is a lot of information that we did share about Paige. Paige previously had worked in the town of Long Beach. She was above Mickey Galus Realty. She was operating out of there for several years. So she has clientele here in the town of Long Beach and is currently, has been operating from Tryon Farms for some time and is wanting to return to the Long Beach community.
She was in New Buffalo for four years. I mean, she's been local. And I, someone recommended her from, or told her about the space, who is a client, a Long Beach client told her space.
And I did also, just for your information, I know the council is aware that there was another gentleman that was interested in room three. I did speak to him prior to last week's committee meeting and he was aware of Paige's interest to rent the room. And he has withdrawn his interest for the room because his business plan was not ready to move forward. So therefore, at this time, Paige is the only potential tenant that we have of showing interest for this room.
So we're looking for a motion to rent the room to Paige?
To move forward with a one-year lease, renting room three to Light Body Studio, the owner being Paige Rummer, that's R U M E R, in the sum of $550 per month.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, community center room number three renovations. Chief.
At your previous town council meeting, you approved the removal of the existing heating unit that was in the room, that was removed by Machiana Construction. You also approved the painting of the room, which is currently underway. And then also the town council approved carpeting for the room. However, after meeting with Paige and going through her business proposal, she has asked that the flooring be changed from carpeting to that of LVP, luxury vinyl planking. Earlier today, I'd shared with the council through an email, a quote from Floor Stores of America. Floor Stores of America is quoting the luxury vinyl planking for that room in a total sum of $5,758.10. After meeting with Paige at the initial committee meeting with the community center committee and giving some thought to what the previous tenants in the community center have contributed to their rental spaces, my conversation with Paige came to an agreement that Paige is willing to put forth a $2,000 commitment to upgrade the floor from tile, I'm sorry, from carpeting to tile. So therefore, the town's contribution, the expense to the town to put new flooring in that room would be $3,758.10. And then the other 2,000 would be given to the town and then Meg would eventually pay the entire amount. But in other words, Paige's first month's rent would be $2,550 for her first month and then $550 for every month thereafter. So she's willing to participate and assist with this project. So I'm looking for a motion from the council to allow us to move forward with the Floor Stores of America so that we can get the vinyl planking ordered and get on their schedule, which is three to five weeks out to get the flooring installed with the hopes of having Paige as a new tenant starting October 1st. That is if we have no setbacks in construction time.
I'll make the motion to approve that. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Soliciting ordinance. I'm not sure what this is about.
This was this one.
So it came to the attention of the clerk's office and to the police department that there was a pest control company that was going door to door most recently. I personally had spoke to the owner of the Fox Pest Control Company and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about our town ordinance and a peddler's permit and what the process is for a peddler's permit. So we just wanted to bring this to the council tonight for discussion, for consideration that maybe we revisit the current town ordinance and look at a potential amendment to the ordinance. Maybe with recommendations from Chris, where we could start with, starting this discussion and possibly looking for suggestions moving forward for the future.
And is something as simple as, again, of prior residents where I was, something as simple as no soliciting was enough on your door, even though we had no soliciting ordinances, an ordinance was enough to keep people away or.
Wait, so Chris, is the bottom line that having the ordinance that you don't have solicitation, it's not strong enough because I don't think.
You're not going to be able to stop everything. This is becoming a, a, a problem in a lot of towns. Yeah, a lot of, right now, various matters, various things, but pretty difficult for police to enforce. So we're looking to put, bolster it a little bit and put something in place that at least allows to offset. So, yeah, I.
Or another option though, besides, I don't think residents want to put on their door.
It's just a little sign.
I don't think you'd need to do that, but we need to have. Just helps a little bit more with enforcement and registration, et cetera. So I think we can discuss.
So when our current code talks about the license, the application procedure, it's a lot out of the clerk's office. Can we legally, uh, say that we don't allow it? Is that, or?
Well, I don't think you can just cut off everything. So what I suggest is that we bring back, you're, you're probably getting close to the end of that season, right? Although you never know, people could come around and solicit to.
Although I, I have had, uh, I had at least two individuals with businesses that called inquiring how to get approval, how to get the license. So we, we reference these items that do not exist currently, like a application, a license to give them. It's a very lengthy involved process. So I was just wondering if, if this code was required in any way. I think it's very old.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Don't use it, you don't enforce it. So I, I think ultimately we'll review that and be able to recommend.
Yeah, I don't believe anybody around currently knows. I guess I should check with Larry Wall if he knew when this.
Did anybody, no, that, that's probably one of those old canned sections of the code. But yeah, Mark and I will be able to review that along with you and bring something back to the council.
Okay.
I don't think we've had problems have, I mean, we used to have fans of people dropped off certain churches and, you know, just dropping things off. I don't know that we've had that here other than.
Yeah, I had, I had a huge one. I talked to Mark, I got in a big argument. There was like five guys on those scooters all around town knocking on doors. They knocked on all of my neighborhood doors, all of our area, like five different guys zooming around on those pedestals.
Yeah, we had a complaint, we had a complaint today on Oriole Trail that they were going door to door on Oriole and 2600 block this afternoon.
I think after the hail, there were many roof companies soliciting for a couple of weeks, months.
Oops, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, proposal from Flock Safety LPR License Plate Reader Cameras Four for $12,000 annually for council consideration by favorable recommendation from the police commission.
So a little history on this. Flock is one of the probably premier license plate reader vendors throughout the nation. It's, um, their network has law enforcement agencies across the nation, state by state that are connected, that we can share real-time data from license plate reader cameras. The first license plate reader camera from Flock is estimated to have been installed in Indiana in 2019. So for about the last six years, La Porte County, Porter County, St. Joe County, Lake County, all the counties surrounding us, even going into Marion County, Michigan, to our east, have these cameras. even going into Marion County, Michigan, to our east, have these cameras in their communities um, currently. The city of Michigan City, um, which we utilize their real-time data from the license plate reader cameras. They have a total um, throughout the city. Those sixty cameras we have used here um, in Long Beach, our officers have utilized the Franklin Street Bridge, um, the camera that is on the bridge Franklin Street coming into Washington Park. We were able to um, put in a partial license plate and a vehicle description into the Flock database. And it was able to um, alert us of a vehicle that we suspected that was entering into cars in the town of Long Beach. It alerted our officers. Our officers had set up in the sixteen hundred block of Lakeshore Drive. Vehicle passes, our officer stopped the vehicle and sure enough, it was our suspects from our car entries here in the town of Long Beach. So that's just one example that shows the many benefits of this real-time data. Um, it also would alert us of, we have many vehicles in the summer months that come into our town that are from outside the area. If an individual is wanted in another jurisdiction, whether it's another county here in Indiana or it's another state, if that individual was entered into the national database, once their vehicle passes by a camera, it will automatically alert us that that wanted person. And let's say they're wanted for burglary. Um, which we did have a case here most recently that a burglary suspect from St. Joe County had entered into our area and our officers had stopped the individual and had a background of prior burglaries. So this information is shared with our officers real time, gives us the opportunity to look for individuals to enter into our community. At the same time, um, as vehicles pass the vehicle description, there's a video, um, video image taken of the vehicle and a snap picture of the license plate taken. And that data is stored for a minimum of thirty days. We can store it longer than thirty days, but it has to be, I believe, in an ordinance that the town council would need to approve. So we can set our parameters. We can do the minimum recommended of thirty days. We could do forty-five days, sixty days. Um, I would probably recommend that we probably do no more than probably forty-five to sixty days. Um, because typically by that time, we will have searched the database for the information that we need. Um, as you drive Carwick Road, you pass Carwick, um, Glen across from the coffee shop on um, Carwick Road, there's a license plate reader camera there. When you get on Carwick Road at Springlin, there's a license plate reader by Krieger right at that intersection there that reads your license plate. Um, Highway twelve, in front of Swing Bellies, there's one. And then also to the west of the intersection, there's a license plate reader that captures vehicles going east and west on Highway twelve. So I've been looking at this for several years. I've been wanting to do this for some time. But with all the other expenditures that we had going, we were wanting to build up some revenue in our lit public safety fund, which we now have some um, funds that are built up in that fund that will cover this annual expense. The expense is for the one-year contract, three thousand dollars per camera. We are looking at four cameras at all four entry points into the town. So that twelve thousand dollars annually would be paid for through the lit um, tax, which is the public safety lit tax. The money in that fund can only be used for police and fire-related expenses. So we can't use it to buy um, a new street plow truck. We can't use it to buy items for the park department. It can only be used for police and fire. And after speaking to our staff, we feel strongly that this is uh, a preventative way for the town to be proactive, to protect our residents and to protect our community and to help us solve crimes much more quickly by having these cameras installed. During our negotiations with um, Flock, they are giving us till September twenty fifth to approve this contract. The contract would be a one-year contract starting in January first of next year. It would run for one year and they are going to waive the installation fee for each of the four cameras, which is approximately six hundred and fifty dollars per camera for the installation. They will waive that fee if we um, agree to the terms of the contract before September twenty fifth. I would like to respectfully ask that the council um, table this tonight. Move it to your September meeting to allow for any public input. Um, I would just like to have it out there for two months to allow our residents um, to either watch tonight's meeting or forward any comments, any concerns or questions to both my office or to the council members so that we feel comfortable knowing that we've allowed enough opportunity for public input on this project. I will tell you that the majority of the police chiefs that I speak with in North, Northwest Indiana have received very little, if not no, um, public pushback on these license plate reader cameras because they have been proven to be very, very beneficial in solving crimes in communities across the region. So any questions that the council may have?
No.
And there's also videos um, that were in those attachments that I sent you out um, to also watch those videos. They're very informative. Or the public that's watching tonight, um, just Google um, Flock Public Safety License Plate Reader Cameras. And there's just a plethora of information out on the internet about license plate reader cameras.
Okay, thank you. So we will table this until the September meeting. Uh, Meg, maybe you can put something on the website about it?
Sure, Mark and I can put something together.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, resolution number twenty twenty five dash something.
Oh, oh, nine.
Oh, oh, nine?
It is oh, oh, nine. It's on the ordinance and.
Okay.
We sent this out prior to.
Amend Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh, oh, five regarding extending temporary moratorium on building permits in Long Beach Business Zoning District.
So you previously took a vote to extend it. This just makes it more formal and make sure we properly memorialize your previous decision to extend it through the end of the year.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make that motion to approve this resolution.
Well, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and I will get the um, issue of setbacks for businesses onto the building commission agenda. Thank you. Uh, claims approval, Meg?
Town checks numbers two one eight two five to two one nine oh four totaling eight hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Water checks numbers five five three five eight to five five three eight one totaling one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents. July payroll of ninety-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. I would ask for a motion to approve these claims.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any council comments? I'll entertain then a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-eight PM.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.